Well, I've got about two. I've got 5:29, but all of our recordings are going.
Okay.
So whenever you are ready.
All right, I am gonna call this meeting to order at 5:29. First we'll do roll call.
Oh, Mike Norman here.
Melissa Hartman, Vice Chair.
Tom Patterson.
Peter Frankl.
And, um...
You better than see.
Michael Norman is out healed.
Uh, can he smell?
Not Michael, but excuse me. Dennis, I'm having a hard time there. Is out healed tonight. New business. First, we'll do the call of the agenda.
So we do have one item on the agenda. I'm sorry, would you like to, would you prefer me to do it?
Please do.
Okay. We have a one item, which is an appeal by Jennifer Ryan, represented by Doug Neistrom, who is present tonight, of the decision of the Bisbee Design Review Board on April 3rd, 2019, denying DRB application 19-07 submitted in connection to the replacement of an accessory structure constructed at 822 C Pace Avenue. The replacement was done prior to permitting, and the board rejected the exterior appearance on a two-to-two vote with one other member recused from the item. At this point, being a, an appeal, staff really doesn't present much other than the original, the original application, and we feel that's actually best done by the original applicant. However, we would suggest that the first thing we do is, because the written record is perhaps not as detailed as would be appropriate for an appeal of this nature, we do have the 16-minute audio of this item from the Design Review Board meeting, and with the permission of the board, I would like to play that for you. So to note, this is again, the audio recording of the item 1907 from the April 3rd, 2019 DRB meeting.
Hey, DRB application 18-81, Bisbee Residential Historic District, contributing property number 721.
That sounds like the wrong one. Fortunately, I have it all. That was April.
Oh, because it's 1910 instead of 01.
It is 1907. I'm just not sure why that was not the correct chunk of recording, and I'm attempting to find the recording.
Do you want us to move on to the applicant and the witness presentation?
I think, I think that would be appropriate. Yes. So we do have Mr. Neistrom here, who is representing Ms. Rogers.
Do you have a presentation?
Well, is there, is there a particular point that the Design Review Board objected to that caused two of the members to vote opposed?
The, the difference, uh, the decision seemed to split along a strict reading of one line of the regulations that states that all structures should be in compliance with the design guidelines, and a broader view that structures should match the property that they're, that they are on. And that, again, created a two-to-two, a two-to-two vote of the strict interpretation versus the broader interpretation.
Okay. So, so two people were on the side of the broader view that it should match the property that it's on, and the other two were saying it should match the historic guidelines. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct, Ms. Norman, yes.
Well, I'm gonna take a timeout so that we can follow the agenda, and we do follow up with our discussion pieces, and, um, so if you could go ahead with your presentation, I appreciate that. And if you could state your name and your address.
My name is Doug Neistrom, B&amp;D Contractors, address is 40 East Vista Bisbee. And I'm here representing Jennifer Ryan tonight, as I have the last two days. As far as making the presentation, basically, my application letter states pretty clearly... Did we go?
Proceed.
Okay. My application letter states pretty clearly, blow-by-blow, how we got here. There, there seems to be some unsaid things that are underlying this whole application process that have nothing to do with design guidelines or historical preservation, and it boils down to a neighborhood feud in the middle. So I'd like to make a record of that, so that we can cut past the nonsensical stuff that's been out to me of this. I was asked to fix a shed that's been there since the beginning of time, that's on the tax roll, it's a non-controlling property, it's not even visible from the street. If you see it, you're trespassing, or you own a helicopter. So, the, I'm not even sure how the whole thing started, but I can surmise. We've been to DRB now three times, or, yeah, or twice DRB, once here, so I think we're past the limo mall, basically, on this whole piece of nonsense. So, um, I'm here to ask her, will common sense be shown amongst you folks? And, uh, we get Jennifer taken care of here, so we can finish her shed, which is 95% complete. If I had been able to repair the thing, it would look no different than it looks in that picture, because that's exactly what the outcome would have been. So, again, this is a long way home for no good reason. So, any questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, you said, I'm just curious, um, the old shed that was there, what was the material? Was it, I mean, did it have T-111 siding?
It was anything and everything, because it was quite old. I don't, Dave Muntz here owns the property previously and built the existing new house on it, new warehouse on it. And I also made mention here that DRB approved in, in 2015, in addition to that house, which followed the exact same materials from the mid-'70s construction that Dave performed on it. There was no apparent reason to be trying to change the appearance of the shed to something that wasn't. And the Design Review Guideline clearly states, "All building structures and sites shall be recognized as products of their own time. Alterations that have no historical basis which seek to create an earlier appearance shall be discouraged."
Yeah, I, I recall, I'm, actually, I was actually looking for that exact wording.
Yeah. Instead, we went down a nonsensical path of what appeared to be just trying to do some damage as far as the credibility of my building, fresh shed in place of the old one. It's of the same like-and-kind, other than the hot-fried materials that was in the rodent one was hardly even described. There's four or five layers of different types of roofing in all different places. There was holes through it, because it was rat-infested, and it was basically a tear now.
There's no pictures of it, is there?
Uh, no, unfortunately, I didn't have any before. It was torn down. David, you didn't need him.
When, when the, maybe I should wait for it to show. And the stop, uh, the stop work notice was issued, it says 12119. Have you only been to the board once at that time?
No, I haven't been nowhere. We, we showed up like on Wednesday, and emptied the shed out, and then the rainstorm was coming, we tarp'd over as much as we could, and we tried to take a look at what there was to fix once we got everything emptied out.
So you had not been to the DRB at that point?
No, I hadn't been anywhere. I wasn't planning on having any kind of a building permit issue either, because repairing a shed is not a building permit requirement. This is not occupied quarters, there's no electricity, there's no water, it's just a shed.
Okay, I, I like the answer. Because that, one of my questions was why, because of the square footage of the, the new shed, it does exceed the, the size requirement, or the threshold in city of Bisbee to require a permit even for a shed. So, I was just curious why, I know originally you wanted to repair the old one, but when that was determined to be torn down, um, any thought about going through the process to get the permit to build?
At that point in time, though, with, with the storm coming, and the dilapidated pile of junk sitting in front of me, the shed was gone by noon that day, and fresh laundry was back there by 1:00 in the afternoon.
So it just wasn't almost like?
We built the thing in a day and a half, you know, but I, I built buildings in the house.
Oh, I know, yeah.
A shed is, is not something I do. I do this for a favor, and the whole thing is blown out of proportion. I, I'm disgusted. I, I've been in this business a lot of years, I've built a lot of things, and I've never spent so much time in front of any city board as I have this.
Well, I, you know, I think one of, one of the problems is, isn't this required by law, a permit, correct?
Right.
And a permit was never applied, and so step well?
I came in and applied for a permit, but I received the notes of the stop notice.
Yeah, but, uh, the permit, if the permit recognition is in our package, so...
I was, I was denied being able to pull a permit, because I was told that I had to go to the design review. And I talked to the mayor about that, and I said, "Isn't this just a little bit overgrown?" I explained the fact that I built the shed in a day and a half, sitting in the exact same spot, exact, exact same size, and I was trying to put her stuff away to keep it out of the storm. A $40 permit for a shed is nonsense to me. I don't, I'll pay the fine for it, I don't care, but, you know, where's the common sense of this?
No, it's not gonna do with common sense, it's got to do with law. The law says that you shall have a permit to build a building of that size, and the law says that you should go to the Design Review Board to get your building application
I understand that.
before you get the permit.
I understand that now.
And the first time it went to anybody was when it was 95% complete.
I understand that now.
Okay, but you, you, you know, for, one, going to the mayor didn't do anything. He doesn't have universal rights to waive any of the...
Well, at that time, there was no city manager, there was no planning director, there was no anybody. Everybody was absent around here at the time. This has been going on since January. And like I said, the, the basis of this has nothing to do with architectural integrity or building permit. It has to do with a neighborhood feud.
All right, uh, I, I thank you for answering that. I was just, I just wanted to understand the, the process and kind of what happened with regard of the permit, so I...
Sure. Oh, that's good.
Peter, do you have any questions?
Do I have any question? No, I'm just looking at it from the, from a point of view of, of being grandfathered in, and in fact, the shed was there, and it's just replacing the old shed. So, from my perspective, I, I see where there's the tarp is the T plot is either justified, but that's my opinion. And the other part of it is, because we've almost, all of the sessions that we've sat at, or that I've sat in, in the past, had to do with exactly what you're talking about, neighbors pissed off at neighbors, uh, people attempting to, to enforce a standard that was not universally enforced, for example, that street that goes behind the Circle K down there at Old Bisbee. And the Design Review Board put down the idea that the little garage that the guy was gonna be putting in there, uh, could not be stuccoed. Well, I took pictures of the whole area, everybody was stuccoed there, there was only, that was the only one that, that was a new building that was being put in, but they wouldn't permit it to be put in because he was using T-111 siding on it, and, and, but, but at the same time, he wanted to stucco it, because it gives it a lot nicer appearance and everything. Well, that was forbidden, and finally, the contractor just walked away from it. It's a local contractor that was involved with it, I think it was quality or something like that. So, and in essence, here was a project that could have improved the neighborhood and everything else, but everybody got so sick and tired of this squabbling all the time, and the fact that one or two people on Design Review Board at the time were so insistent that stucco was not permitted in the area, when I took photos of almost all the houses with stucco, and I said, "Well, how do you justify that? Isn't that discriminatory?" So that's my point of view. On the other hand, I'm looking at the building itself, I don't see anything objectionable, except for the fact that I've been told, and I've seen in a lot of these guidelines, that you have to have sash tack windows, and you have slider windows on the side. So that's, to me, would be the only thing that I would, and I wouldn't insist on changing, but that's the only violation that I can see at this particular moment, that is, that we're dealing again with the same kind of issues. We have the same thing going on with, with what's his name, John Sky. And again, there was a neighbor spat, the neighbor wasn't even near the house, he was on the other side, there was already houses in between, you couldn't even see the house from where he was, and he had made a big deal about it, and because there was an approachment into the setback by a couple of inches, and they tried to disqualify their whole thing. In the end, I, it, it was approved by the, by the, uh, board, and yet, the plaintiff's son was a lawyer, and he ended up taking it to court, I don't know what happened after that call. But the point I'm making is that, to be a, a city, and to be a community where people really respect each other's rights, and, you know, I think we're going way beyond the Design Review Board, we're going down onto the Fifth Amendment, which involves a tanking, and we're talking about, uh, the fact that grandfathering an existing building that was not torn down and disappeared, it was actually there before it was replaced, should not require all of this red tank, that's my opinion.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with this building, I'm just saying, we have a process. First, you can't demolish a building without an demolition permit. And we ran into that in, in the last one. I mean, you, it's not a difficult thing to go through, but at least it gives the city a chance to review the building and make sure there isn't some historic significance to it. You know, maybe it looks rotted and rat-infested, but maybe that's where Joan of Art was born or something, I don't know. I'm just saying, there's a, step one, is if you're gonna wipe a building away, you've gotta get a demolition permit. Second, this building is large enough that it requires a building permit. And to get a building permit, you go in front of the Design Review Board. Now, we went, we went, I don't know, half a year, we didn't even have enough people on the Design Review Board to have a meeting. So all that, all that time, nobody could construct anything. So, and we've gotta decide what it is that we're looking at here, and, um... Typically, we don't review the entire project, there's usually a point or two in the project that we...
We, we, while we don't have, have a staff attorney present, I've, I've discussed this with, with the attorney's office, and it, at this point, the question is entirely, uh, it, it's out of the process of permits, not permits, should a permit have been gotten in advance or not, is, is not relevant. The question is, was the Design Review Board denial appropriate or not? That's, that's the entire, the entire question. Was it correct based on, based on the, the guidelines and the law, which are silent on whether or not a permit was correctly applied, applied for in, in the first place? Yes, it should have been applied for, no, it wasn't, but that shouldn't have been an issue to either the Design Review Board or to this body.
And that situation's been remedied at this point?
An application has been applied for, but it cannot be granted until either the Design Review Board approval is granted, or this body overturns the, the previous denial.
Thank you. Do you have anything further to add?
Um, I don't think so, unless you have any other questions, I think.
Um, maybe during our discussion period, I...
The answer would be appropriate to cure the audio clip from the...
I was gonna ask, are you ready for the audio?
I believe I do have that now, school.
Go with that next.
Okay, so I'm going to fail. We will have to, I should give us a call tomorrow, myself and Mr. Ward will have a discussion on next steps for you. Number 721, 1001 West Boulevard, the application seeking approval to construct a two.
We're not quite there.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item three, DRB application 18-81, car garage attached to existing laundry and store.
Somebody didn't show up. It's a motion. So I couldn't get it quite right while the discussion was happening.
Bisbee Residential Historic District, non-controlling property 620, uh, the applicant is seeking retroactive approval for the attempted repair of existing shed, uh, removed and replaced with like-and-kind due to rodent infestation, fungus rot, and foundation skids failing, matching materials to existing 1970s house. Shed is built in exact location, size, as original. The applicant is Jennifer Ryan, located, uh, located, represented by Doug, Doug Neistrom. Mr. Neistrom?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here for this application.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Parker.
Is this watching everyone?
I don't think these gentlemen are able to...
Are you hearing okay?
I am. But it's rough.
The echo in there, that kind of...
Yeah, which, I'm hearing it, but it's rough, I...
It's exactly what he said.
Yeah, it just, well, my, my, it was just described, yeah.
Yeah, can you skip to the objections at all?
Okay, I'm also just gonna bring this a little closer and work off of it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That might work a little better.
I appreciate it.
Well, I would say where is, it was not visible, you do things like that, and it's a little uphill.
Just in some form or in the future, it's a mission discussion, which is worse than necessary to be having. I think we should, here, into the point of about dating, the grid guidance that we had, something that should be explicit or implicit, and other than physical site condition that is visible or, whether that should, I don't know, why you would have that, you can insert that question, of course, the number of towns down, oh, well, it can prove why there does, that property, but if all of these conditions is not visible from the street, it's not assigned, we're here to have, so I'd like to be able to see what's assigned, whether it's updated this, so that anyone can see, we're gonna make it simple that, you know, what, nine, however. If it means that's kind of a property survey, that we can use a method about how many days it exists, that's the law.
Well, the other clause is, is not being, uh, being sure of, or people have stuff without permits, or being made, you know, or, oh, well, it's already built. And I would not, I have to think that someone, they, they had a permit, they, had a, there was a permit, you involved in it?
Yeah, I, I wasn't involved. We just started tearing it down, I didn't make, I could do this in old sheds back in that area where it was there. We didn't think we were gonna get over a tower or something, but once you start tearing it down, that's what happened, we just didn't make the, and then we should have, yeah, I, well, I, I always got my permits, it's, yeah.
But, um, the other part, so, that's why the block's over there, is, is that, the block for Bisbee, that's what Ginger had told me?
No, it was a, it was kind of the ground, in the very back, where, where, around this one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not occupied quarters, they had, well, it's, 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 it has a stop.
Um, I'm not expecting anything, but I think, I'm not, construction, we're all looking for, finding issues, that, um, so, uh, there's not much you can say, we can let it slide, and everything else, it's already there, but, um, I can say, the G1 of the society, I think, I'm very minimal, we should put add-ins on it. I don't, I don't make that really a good deal.
Uh, and this building code, 5.3 from 5B, the new construction is not completely compatible, the volume, aspect, all the material and textures of Bisbee Historic District, so it matches the houses in the criteria. And, um, then there was an F, in the B portion of it, it said, "No non-controlling building discussion, any added or altered..." I don't think I want to do that. Read that part.
So, so we were just saying, I remember, is, is it supposed to be housing next door that didn't be modeled in the '70s, that you can't reach to the next house, or, or like that?
Yeah, it says, it says, yeah, you're not to the stores. It, it should be, it should be built compatible with the, the materials of the texture that are of the Bisbee Historic District, so you want it to be compatible with that, you sign that one.
Not the housing store, so where are we?
You meant, that's changed, you're back now?
I was gonna put a cleaning, foundation on the shed.
That was a good thing.
Yeah.
Given, given that, I think, I think at some point in time, we have to start breaking the, 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 the stuff, and, 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 and come back and go, "Well, I didn't know that I needed a permit," or, "I didn't know that I could, I didn't know," or, you know, I didn't know.
No, no, I think that the problem, just to address that, would probably be in a, a specific agenda item, we could, we could really go for that, and, and make a policy, and get it right, and swear, it could be adhered to, and always remember, instead of a maybe, like you tend, tend to get, that this maybe isn't the time to do it.
What is the consequence of this violation? You have this been identified, brought to court, and...
Which is one way to tell?
That I'm afraid I can't go.
Do you know, like, names?
I will note the two people focusing on the, whether or not there is a permit or grants for the two of them to stay.
But the, um, that, there would have been a $200, there would have been a $100 fine.
Let, let me pause for a minute, this is before my time. Mr. Parker, did you receive notification from Mr. Suarez on this item? Okay, so no, we did not.
It would have been a $100 fine, but it's, it was supposed to be a $25 fine.
So, so the answer would be a, be a fine based on, based on notification fee of $2500? So, that, that's the answer.
We double, we double, that's not enough, and I, I think that that should be changed, Mike, I think we're all in the same... be changed, Mike, I think we all have the same page on that, but today that's what it is.
So is this part of the agreement, very little least, twenty five dollar fine?
Twenty five dollar fines for the DRB and for, for building permit, we doubled, which will probably be an extra sixty nine dollar fine.
Is that correct? Is it represented or is it a draft? But I don't think anyone's ever paid attention to the guidelines, or the guidelines, issues which is useless, I don't think.
Mr. Conley, I can state that county staff is working with the interim city manager to propose an overall overhaul of the, of the city's planning, starting with building code, permit fee structure. So that is something that is already in discussion with the city manager regarding overall fees.
The reason this is all not just one, we got two meetings, we have the same, that's an area that's under the roof, where someone just built something different, didn't make use the sliders, they did exactly what you guys did in our city, and they're doing the same issue again, and it's kind of seemed like a waste of time, because if I didn't have to do it, it'd be a couple hundred bucks, and you don't have to build things correctly or all of the guy's time or anything like that, like, you know, like I say, and this is all kind of, so that's why I'm calling on this, and we're gonna think, you gotta.
Do you mind if you schedule an email, update? Is there any more discussion on the site, or are we ready for a motion?
That was a motion to approve. Got a second?
No, a motion is second, all those in favor? Disposed? Mr. Ward, do you want to, what happens on the time of fail? Or some, some words, it automatic?
So again, to clarify, the two nays were the, were the two gentlemen that were speaking about fees and fines.
And they happened, and the, the one that was like this, that had been decided previously, Mr. Sky was talking about his own property, so.
So the two noes were John Sky and who else?
Michael McParkin. And Peter Gaffner and Stephon Green voted to approve the request.
Regardless of what we ended up doing, I think there was one good point there, and that there's people building stuff all over the place that we don't even know have been built, because nobody happened to raise, like you were saying, raising the hell out of it. How we get people to go through the proper process, how we educate them to know when a shed is a shed and when a shed is considered a building. But it's, you know, I got, I, to me, that's one of the best looking sheds I've seen in quite some time, but that's the problem we had, we had, in our last hearing, it was a problem, everything was after the fact, but, yeah.
Any other comments?
No, I mean, I agree with Mr. Patterson's comments about the process, but that's not kind of what we're.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is what I'm saying, yours is what we decide.
I agree a hundred percent, I mean, it's another subject in terms of education and some people understand the processes. Comment, Mike, do you, are, mostly look for comments related to the issue?
Well, actually, I'm, I'm ready to hear from Mr. Ward. And then I'd like to ask, have the ability to ask a few more questions, because I have questions actually on the paperwork too.
So, could I mention one thing?
Certainly.
After the event occurred, unfortunately, at least at that time, the project is approved on John Sky, I called up the person who was in charge, to get his name, the person who preceded Peter, Mr. Asparza. Mr. Paul Asparza? Asparza, yes, Paul Asparza. And I said to him, you know, this whole thing could be resolved with one simple act, you don't have to be, be creating all these illegal protocols and everything else, that any sort of changes to an existing property has to be, and for the design review, what should be accompanied with the survey. That would eliminate all the problems that we had in John Sky, would eliminate all the other problems that the survey had presented right at that time. Then everybody could look at it and realize, oh, this is a problem, there's a red flag, this is not permitted, or, yeah, we can let it slide.
Whereas I.
But I'm concerned, you have no information.
Whereas I appreciate your remarks and I agree with them, we need to get right back to resolving.
And I have, and I won't go to the extent of a survey or a shed, but.
A lot of potluck with the points.
And I think they did do a drawing of some sort.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, whatever's on their records with the board of, with the board of assessments, or what do you call it, the, you know.
Design review board.
Well, the task, the assessment, the, the assessments are, yes, they also have those maps, they have it easy to show exactly, you don't have to hire a surveyor, you just go down there and get those maps and put the, you know, show where that particular house is and where it shows on the, but then the setbacks and everything else, but once the design review board has all that information, and the owner has that information, then we're all talking the same language from that point on.
All right, so now, Mr. Ward, could you state your name and your address, please?
My address?
Whatever, Ward.
You can give your.
You can give your business address.
I'm the, I'm the, I'm the building inspector for the city of Bisbee, and I'm not here to defend the board, but I am here to defend rules that are established that, that regulate the historic district. And one thing, for the board of adjustments, for the meetings, it said, it said they're at two four two, in the zoning code, article two four two D, the board of adjustments may not, in section two, is the grant of variance if the special circumstances applicable to the property are self imposed by the property owner.
Yeah, but that's superseded by the historic building code, who says that the design review board can increase or decrease setbacks based on the neighborhood that it's building.
Everywhere in Bisbee, the setback number.
I'm just saying, the building code is superseded by the historic building code, and in one neighborhood, you might need, maybe the law, maybe the law says five feet on the side, but it could be one neighborhood, it needs to be increased to ten to match the other properties, and another neighborhood, the houses may be three feet apart.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, we're not talking.
So I mean, yeah, but these quoting building code.
I'm reading from the zoning code.
Okay. The Bisbee zoning code?
What's that?
Bisbee zoning code?
Yes, Bisbee zoning code, this is where the powers and duties of the board of adjustments are defined, that's all I think it's doing.
And what I just told you came out of the historic code, the setbacks, other items can be adjusted. Okay, so.
But we're not dealing with, we're not dealing with setbacks here, are we, really?
Well, what's the point, what do you, what do you want to talk about?
I'm not here to be contentious with you.
Well, no, I mean, did you approve this, is this something you would normally need to approve?
Yes, this is something that normally would be approved by the designer report prior to construction.
And why was it a stop order issue?
Because, because there was no building permit, and there was no permission, specifically for both of those, there's no permission from the design review board as required by the zoning code, as well as no building permit.
Okay, and when, when the, the building permit was issued, was the stop work order lifted?
There was no building permit issued, because there isn't, there ain't, in the store guideline here that are, and the ones that are in the zoning code, I am not allowed to issue a building permit prior to approval from the design review board.
Okay, thank you, you need to understand that.
I would like to clarify, and, and I hate doing this for the staff, but the.
I mean.
The section, the section read, that, that, that Mr. Ward read is about variance, let's say a setback variance, but in this case, we're not, they're not asking for a variance, that, that regulation doesn't quite apply, it's, this is an appeal, so this is, this is where, the, the question here is, is the board of adjustments shall hear and decide appeals in which it is alleged that there is an error, order, an error in the order requirement decision made by the zoning administrator or enforcement officer in the enforcement of the zoning code, that also goes through and talks about, the design review board is, is covered under that, so it's an appeal of a decision rather than like a setback variance or height variance where that, with a ruling about a quote self imposed wound comes into play, so it's whether or not the, the design review board applied their rules correctly, that's, that's the question.
So there is no permit, even though a permit is required?
The permit has been applied for, but it cannot be issued because the design review board has not yet approved it.
Okay, and.
There is a fine struc, so if, if we do this after the fact, there is a fine structure if these things were permitted, that can remedy the violation, if it's approved.
Thank you.
Yes, the, the permit is available.
Okay, so if, if a person didn't apply for a permit, didn't apply for a demolition permit, whatever, there are penalties that are in, in place that can take care of that, but the key is, do we believe the design review board should have approved?
I guess, I, I'm trying to summarize, I kind of dealt with, was it more, you were gonna present or?
Oh, there's, there's a question.
I don't want to get ahead.
But the, you know, the, the design review board doesn't uniformly apply some of the things that they do.
Right.
And that, I think, comes into play here, I can't justify anything that was done by the, by the rules, but, but I also see that there's been, there've been mistakes made, they need, that, like, one mistake doesn't justify the next mistake, but, but it has, but it has happened, and I don't think that their finest hour when that happens.
Well, do you, as a building inspector, ever go by to see a property, have a discussion with the property owner and tell them it's okay for them to do something without going in front of the design review board?
Yes, if it is something that doesn't require design review board permission, then I tell them that they're.
And that's a, that's a judgment called by you.
Yes, it is. And, and the plaintiff here, I don't know what we call, Mrs. Ginger Ryan, she, she and Mr. Neistrom both have my, my cell phone number, and I answer my phone day and night, and if there was a question regarding the legality of that, that was, that was available to them, but like I said, the, the board doesn't always do everything right either, and I'm not justifying them, I'm, I'm here to defend the regulation.
Understood, thank you for your reminder on that. Do you have anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much. Did you have some comments?
Yeah, I, I would like, just a couple observations, and then just kind of some clarity on, on what we're doing here tonight, because, yeah, our role tonight is not to talk about setbacks or variances, is to make a decision regarding the, the situation with, with this project, so I, I think, in our context, in terms of the city's structure and processes, the buck stops here. So, and so we get to decide what, or it's our responsibility to decide what kind of the next, next steps is, or the outcome is. An observation, listening to the discussion from the DRB, is I noticed that on their agenda, that the chair position and the vice chair position are both vacant, so I think there were some issues in terms of managing the discussion and how the decision, the vote was taken, all that, I think, again, this goes by issues that I think we brought up in terms of board's understanding what their roles are, and how to basically handle a meeting and a decision, and again, I think there, on the city's part, there needs to be a little more outreach and education on, on these processes, I think that's part of the problem. So we talked about the building permit, I was interested, curious why the DRB was discussing fines, because I don't know if that's in their purview, that's kind of a separate issue, and I don't want to get into that tonight, since.
I think Mr. Gardner, that was.
I think we're ready to let him finish.
Yes, as Mr. Gardner mentioned, the issue of the building permit is not really part of our discussion this evening. In terms of kind of the, the issue, the property is not historically contingent property, the shed is not visible from the street, my understanding is it was replaced in kind, I think it's questionable, the DRB's, there's been some suggestion that possibly the, the DRB's interpretation was not correct based on some other factors related to the neighborhood, and I think the other thing that concerns me is how long it's taken to resolve this issue, and the timely resolution of the issue, so, from my perspective, I, I think we should, I would recommend approval, so that Mr. Neistrom can go forward and finish up the project and kind of.
The only reason I, I brought up the fines was, that does away with the whole permitting thing, if, if it's done in, in the day, if it's done after the fact, and all the fines are paid, then that is that issue that rests, and I would probably think that the time they put in at all these hearings is far more than what the fine would be. I think it's pretty nice looking shed myself, but.
I don't have a problem.
I have a problem.
Comments? And let me, let me say this before we start, do either of you, Joe, or do you have any closing remarks, does anybody have any closing remarks to what we've heard, and then we go into our discussion, and then we can put a motion forward?
Mike, you want me to stand up here and just out loud? You can just.
You just, just tell us.
I, I've lived next door to Ginger, and have for years in here, and probably part of this fault was mine, because she said, hey, Dave, can we just do some of this shed, because we've been fighting squirrels and halibutinas and, and everything, I said, yeah, Ginger, we gotta tear this thing down, because it's full of crap, so we did that, and then it just got out of hand, because Doug was my friend, and he built something really nice, you know, it looks really nice, but you're, you're right, we didn't go through the process, and that's why we're here now, and I, so, we're just here to kind of beg forgiveness, and Ginger, Ginger, she brought millions of dollars to this town, and Cherakawa Health and stuff like that, and again, like I say, the shed's just back, I'm the only one that sees the shed, and Ginger, and, and it is nice. And there is, you know, I put a metal roof on my own. Yeah. I didn't know that Bisbee was the only town in Cochise County that required a permit, and Joe happened to be driving by, and he walked up to the door and did a stop work, of course, it took me like twenty minutes to run over here and get the permit, but I think a lot of it is an education thing, and, and whether, whether it's we advertise Joe's twenty four seven number so he gets no sleep, but something where people could just call and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking of doing, do I need to go through any kind of approval process?
I actually think that is available, but maybe.
Yeah, we just did it, we just did.
I, I really do think that is available. Joe, do you have any closing comments?
You know, I didn't like the speculation on the, the motives of the board, I don't think it's, it's anybody's purview to speculate on what, you know, I mean, in an issue like this, to speculate on the motives that were the neighborhood fight and that, I really think that pure, I really think our group has pure, had pure motives.
Yeah, I, when I read, when I read the letter that was attached, it, it was obviously meant to sway the opinion, because it was a rotting, rat infested, scumbag, you know, so, yeah, we, I, I, we have looked beyond the, the feuds, and obviously, the design review board had a tie when they had five members, they now have more, and the only relief is for us to make the decision, if we send it back to them, it could very well end up our hands again, so, we're, Joe, I can tell you, we're not looking, squabbles don't mean anything to us.
Okay, and does staff have any further comments for us before we move into our final discussion and call for a motion?
I would just like to remind, as a procedural issue, that motions are made in the, in the affirmative, so regardless of how a vote would turn out, a motion would be made to grant the appeal and therefore grant approval.
Thank you.
And then, again, vote yes to overturn the decision and grant the, the approval, or no to let the decision of the DRB stand, let the denial stand. Other. Uh, other than that, I have no further comment.
And that would require them to reapply?
If, if, if this board denies it, then yes, the denial stands, and they would be forced to reapply, uh, to either remove the shed, or to reapply with changes.
Does the board have more discussion we'd like to have?
No, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go.
I move that, uh, we approve, um, the, uh, appeal, and approve the, uh, uh, or, I don't know the right wording, but approve, moving forward, um, granting the permit to delete the shed.
Second.
As, as applied for in the applicant's application.
Second.
I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously for.
Thank you. I wouldn't want you to go.
Well, you know, we don't meet that often, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, well.
But I, I, I believe what you're saying, Joe, you know, there's a, a lot of things going on in the community that people just do, and you've got to cover the whole community by yourself, so I'm, you know, I'm pretty happy with the way things come out, for the most part.
Yeah.
And I, with that, do you have a time for me, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting?
It is, I have six twenty-one.
All right, six twenty-one, this meeting is adjourned.
You got the clock.
These are virtual.
Thank you for all your time.